All right. While the weeks come, as a believer, sick of you, sick of you listening today, and what we are trying to do is help Hoover County be successful. We have to address this meeting with Jesus' name and pray, amen. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Some of these things are just relating to items you all know by already. But the store said Son of Somer and Paul in my email about millage rates. And I think that we could probably use the same resolution that we've used in past years where it has not changed. From what I read about it, it kind of seems like it only should change if there's an actual tax amount that's changed for some reason. So that's just one thing I wonder if I'm attached to you that maybe needs to be amended.
Everybody give that mail consent? I think everybody saw that.
Okay. Let's see. Also, we received today a notification that if we wanted to change any of our license fees for our ABC board items, that this is the time to do that. If we're not, we signed up and sent that.
I think we all, we usually have voted on that, but basically we got it up there to the top.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we all want to drop it, I don't think. Y'all want to put that on the consent here?
Yeah.
Make sure we all are at on that.
Okay. What they send is a blank form that doesn't have our fees on there. And it just says, you know, if there's no change, if they're not going to change anything, you just mark that as no change. And then they do that.
But let's see where we're at.
Okay. I will check this out.
Make sure we are.
We, yeah, we changed, they sent us something over here last fall. And we looked, and I don't remember what that was, if that was.
That was a new, that was a new type that they added. It was a new sales type. I think there were actually two. One was for like, like your little food carts and that kind of thing. And then there was another one too. We put, we sent it at the same. There was, there was two though, that two new types. I can look back into it, but there were two new types.
Both liquor licenses.
Yes, they were. They were both liquor licenses. And they were to do with, I thought one was to do with that, but maybe I was wrong on that one. But we sent it at the same time when the state did. Because you guys said at that point, that's what we usually do.
So when the local store or pays, like, you know, like we got the ABC store out there, well, we got another store selling whiskey.
They, yeah.
Now, when they buy that, do they pay tax on that or do they collect tax there? How does that, where do we get that tax from?
Through the state. See, they, they have to go, they cannot purchase it but from the ABC store.
That's what it's paying.
They have to go purchase it from the ABC store.
So there's no additional tax on any of that?
No, uh.
But what, so you still have to make their license, they say.
Yes.
Well, you just didn't, I didn't even say that because I didn't want to say that on a lot of whiskey.
Just like, like Rayvern, Rayvern sells alcohol.
146 right there?
Yeah.
They won't have a lot without that store.
Yeah. Like Rayvern says, sells alcohol, but they come and pick it up at the ABC store.
So the tax is already done.
And then they'll charge an additional fee. And then they, you know, when they sell it out there, they'll sell it for a higher cost.
Okay. Well, we're getting our money on that too.
Yeah. You can always save money if you buy from the ABC.
Well, that's okay maybe at the far.
I guess so.
But that's the funny, looking a little pride in their thing of, oh, this will lay, not brown, you know?
Okay. The other things I, I know Emmett's been kind of dealing with ACCA about changes and a possible change in our policies and our employee handbook.
Yes. So we just made, call me this morning, so they're putting together the change in the, in our policies that they feel that we need to change. So we'll have that, she just wants to make sure we brought it to work session. So they'll send it for our review before and send it to us all.
Let's put that on you, good.
And, yeah, and also Jason's working a little too.
I also have a resolution for the sheriff vehicles that's been updated here. We had one last month that didn't have the much current information on it and didn't have everything kind of set. And from one in the Sheriff's Department, I've been working with Patrick a little bit on it. They are going to be able to get three explorers. They're going to bid out the outfitting of those vehicles because stickers was higher than, than what they really, you know, thought they could get the outfitting for. So he's working on that right now. But we do have a resolution, I did have it already from Kelly, for the actual purchase of the vehicles using LTCF money.
What's the total on that?
It was a hundred and forty-nine thousand and so on.
New business consent?
What, what? What do we have left in that? Have we ever sold that money?
Um, the only other thing is the equipment I think.
We got a hundred and sixty now.
And, um, that may be here for, I had, and then of course, the Sheriff's Department wants to talk to you about SRO training. But that's everything that I have on my list to talk about today. Oh, come on, the sales tax that we received from Alabama Department Revenue. We are starting to administer our tax collections in November. They had a little bit of a snafu sending the county school board their percentage of the sales tax. So I'm working on getting that set up with them. This just kind of popped up at the end of the week last week. And once we get that set up, where they're actually sending their portion, right now they're sending it all to us. Once, once they get that set up, and then we've got a final number, I'll just, we'll kind of check the school board for their portion of the sales tax. And I've done a communication with them, because we'll back and talk with them on that.
So you know exactly how much it is that they sent you?
I, I do know at this point, but of course, it may change before they actually get the school board set up. We may receive another payment later.
So it has, it has their portion of check for the school, but it's not tied in with ours, mixed in with ours.
It is mixed in with ours. They actually send all as one big lump sum, so it was all the sales tax instead of just our portion.
So on there it says school portion or how do you know?
It's just a total because it's half.
Oh, it's half, oh, okay.
It's half. It's out of the two percent, we get a percent, the school board gets a percent. So that does at least make it easy.
So you sent them their fifty percent that we received now?
I will. But I'm trying to actually wait and hoping that they'll be pretty quick about it. I've kind of pressed the importance of it to the contact with Alabama Department Revenue to get this set up as soon as possible. It was really just a sort of a, you know, just a mistake on their part, you know? It's just part of the transition. It's, it's nobody intentionally did anybody, it's just a transitional problem. But I'm glad the school board knows that because it's hard to catch it when your sales tax varies a lot from month to month. And we are talking about the end of the year where your sales tax would have gone up anyway, you'd suspect. And they were the same with them around that time. You've got a pretty good impression of your sales tax generally. So, yeah, I'm glad that they're working with us and I'll let them know that we will let them check just as soon as I know we got that file number. And I'd rather leave that room where we can show them the backup of what we're sending them. And just send them one check that'll get them to where they're supposed to be. And then the Alabama Department Revenue can continue from there to send their portion.
Well, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't let go to a three months, I mean, we're with.
When they seen it, they sent it to county, it was one large portion.
Yes, one large.
And it was that it was such a big increase.
No, it did not. Because, I mean, like I said, it changes, so it changes a fair amount each month. You would expect your sales tax to go up at that part of the year, anyway, but it was not. It was not noticeable.
The other, the other thing is, is like Buster Miles somehow didn't get a letter. And I know that y'all worked with him and got them straight. But I don't, I wonder if Avenue is letting folks know too. I know the Department Revenue sent out letters, but is Avenue, you know, letting it catch?
I would say Avenue's probably not. Avenue will continue to collect, anything collect until, you know, such time where people have gotten the message. Which, you know, they are actually sending over everything they're supposed to send over. It's, at first, we felt there was going to be a real problem with it because I think some people were finding out from Avenue that they were going to have to get a refund and then turn and send it to Alabama Department Revenue, but that's not the case. All they have to do is provide proof that they pay Avenue and show their permits where they pay. Avenue, the Alabama Department Revenue is saying, okay, no taxes, you know, definitely there's no tax to you at this time because.
I know when the states, when you get your EIM number, or when you get your number, you know, from the state or sales tax number, they send a letter out with their, to you. So that's the reason I started doing mine with my, because they sent the letter. And so maybe you can pay your taxes through this.
And you always can.
And it's through Avenue. So hopefully, you know, they'll continue doing that, people will just follow that, like, go to there.
I think there's a little while, there's going to be some transition problems. I know some folks have already called about it and, you know, states working with us to try and make sure that they understand what they're requiring to do. And at some point in time, we will no longer get the permits from Avenue. And that, that will work itself out. Like I said, there's been a huge family transition problem. People won't like to change, they don't want to change something they've been doing for years. So it's going, it's going to take a minute for them to change. But, you know, also people, you know, they get a letter from the state, they don't, they don't understand what it means. They're like, oh, I'll have to give this out later, come decide, and they realize that it's a problem.
It's really easier for the state to do this today.
You know, and then our, I mean, too, it took us a while, Avenue, to log in for what we did say our reports. And they were sending, and so they were sending us emails showing how much had been transferred to our bank account. We weren't getting emails. We go back and track back and apparently from years ago, when the county must have got, had come to the state, it had old email addresses attached to our file. And they were sending it to email addresses of employees that aren't even here anymore. So we're going to get that worked out. You know, like I said, it's just transition. It's a little bit irritating at first, but I'm confident that, you know, through some of that, it'll all iron out. And this, this thing with the school, that's been the biggest problem that, you know, we got it out at the end of the week last week. And hopefully, we'll have it done, you know? It just depends on how quick they are to respond. We've got one person that's great at responding, and she's not really over this part of it. And the other one, she's a little slower, you know, email her, you might even email back the next day. So we just have to, you know, be patient with it.
Roger, any other questions? So basically, right now, we're looking at no, no tax consent, alcohol tax consent, policy change, new business. Any questions for her?
Lee? I need to, to prove, put out my can for you and a bid for a little grain of dirt. So the two are pleasing out, what I put out.
Okay.
Motorade on the dirt.
Do we not do the motorade with the dirt?
We, we do, but the last couple of years I've had, it's been contractors, we don't have them out. And so I got time to go do it, thought of it, and it's worked out for the last couple of years.
So you got a can?
Can, uh, yeah, it's a big one, can bid, and then grain dirt.
Is everybody good with consent or you want something else? Any questions?
I'm good, good.
On what, on what part are you, are you mechanic?
No, I'm talking about motion repairs. Stuff that I can, stuff that I can. Um, I haven't put in the house, I haven't had a few issues because I've had a couple of transmissions and stuff that I do, big ones we have.
Motion, motion, uh?
And chores, what chores?
Consent, put them up from consent, no, anything else?
I'm glad it is, we want to get it right now, but I mean, I take dinner, post-lease day, take the wine, and they give us a morning warranty for the channel. And I just keep them, is that right? Is that right? Are, are transmissions at the panel code through the mound, or unlimited warranty on there?
It's according to the year model and the particular transmission, but most of them that we've gotten has got the, the good warranty on it.
Then it's got some water shifts. Actually, they sent their molding contract to them. They're saying no over there, they're in the D unit, not maintaining for a year.
How many years have we been maintaining the molding? I mean, that's basically the, the basic.
It's molding, that's all we do, it's molding. And we've done it up till last year, last year was first year that we had it. So we would, we would have another year and it not been, where we couldn't get back on it, but it was something.
How much is it, how much we calling it?
It usually runs, the school, how quick they get and they get done, twenty thousand dollars.
And how many, how many, you don't know?
Uh, six hundred.
That's true.
It, it, it's, they chose, their, the contract's six hundred and sixty dollars a day. I have to provide the fuel, I have to provide the maintenance.
You just give them around the dams, all you do then, though.
Just the dams and dunes and stuff like this, yeah.
I'm still talking Mike Rogers and I like it to run around, but I've been talking to him every week. And I was reached out this morning, best to let that back to him.
And then Jason, Jason, I think, Jason would be able to do that, I should do.
Well, it's not, I mean, we, we don't even know nothing, we don't even have a way of getting to them without going across somebody's land. We don't even have a lease, no. I mean, there's two of them out there in my district, they're building houses, though. I don't want shit, do you? The one right below me that already got four on.
It's on private property, isn't it?
Yeah. We don't own any of that.
But what about, what about if we only do the ones that's not on private property?
They're all on private property.
They'd be none of them.
They're all on private property.
What about the ones on the national park?
Yeah.
Hey, I just thought one more thing.
I don't like your one admirer.
They'll still do it anytime.
My question is, you, not any time you do ever sign an agreement to do the water shifts.
Well, there are some papers where the commission's obligated to provide maintenance, but there are some that, that's good man.
Well, let's go with the word some, or which one of the word.
And then you're forced to go back in there to do them.
There, it's all, it's all the way.
So all, since they got an agreement that we would.
Talking about, I'm talking about that token, yeah, it's useful, but it's still got a lot of their weeks.
Then, back then, they weren't private, right?
It's made by their ACCA.
But then they weren't private.
They were a week too.
So you're going to someone's name, you're going to have to.
Well, you're going to be killing this season in this place, we'll be out here. Y'all were telling them they don't own their house.
And it's gone costing so much more money.
Well, so what do you ask for specifically? Do you want to go forward and you need to go?
We don't, we don't mow or not mow.
All right. So we can't vote today, but do you want a resolution put together to mow or not mow, or to mow or not to mow?
Put it on there, but it was new business and see if you hear anything from it.
Oh, I've been talking to these folks since last few years. I said, when was it, I almost whispered. I just made, and Meg said, I talked to my brother, he was just like. And he's still up there.
To mow or not to mow? You're going to put a resolution, that is the question. But we'll put it on new business.
You have to get that.
No.
You don't, okay.
Say, if my legal's concerned, we'll keep what it goes, and then law firms to do it, then.
That's what I'm saying, you got one more year to not do it, and then that's something that's got to happen.
And if they force us to, if they're selling private property.
I don't know how to come out of private.
That's a mean dog question.
It was always private property. Nothing, Lee's got stacked papers this high, and I've read them twice. Meg has read them, Lee has read them. There's nowhere in there that he gives us a right of way to get to them. But it does say in, is it three of them, that we're responsible for maintenance? There's two or three of them that say that, the rest of them, they don't say nothing.
Well, which three of those? I don't think it would be nice to know.
Oh, it was done in the sixties, you know, the early sixties.
The Constitution was down in our world, pulled together, but I'm still hopefully following it. But I mean, this, this is agreement.
See, back years ago, the ones going up to us boarding springs were not private property. And over the years, property got purchased. Some of it was on federal, some of it was on federal, they sold.
But the county's never owned any of them.
Well, I'm for either, or, whichever way you want.
All right, we got it on new business. All right. Anything else with Lee? Uh, it's a beautiful day, I'm just trying to get out of here.
How quick, how quick will the tar and gravel start to come? Should that guy, the folks we doing, still be doing the big job, or are you going to?
He still, he still will be doing the big job, Jeff.
So Miles, he's doing that, you're just doing positive.
No. We're the, we're still.
I'm not just.
No, that's why I was saying.
Miss Carr? Miss Carr?
I'll work with them, do it.
I'm, I know it's my fault, because I'm not strict enough, I should be mean strict, but I'm not the way that he is. Yeah. Terry asked to have it forward.
We, without the Sheriff's Department, I thought that's Sheriff's Department. But our department heads are supposed to be calling Lee about oil changes. All right, I signed a check last week, we're one got done in Ford Store. I know we didn't do a resolution, we just asked everybody to do it. Do we need to pass a resolution? I mean.
You're going to change Ford?
Yeah.
You got to do a resolution. Are you still rushing? Because we just have to, I don't know why, because you've got a tire machine and everything, right? That, you know, we just got to pay a four hundred something dollars for what we had done, yeah, this is what we need to do.
Resolution for oil changes?
And tires and.
Typical.
Oil maintenance, yeah. Tire. Uh, new business or consent?
So when you get that, uh, transmission thing, you can also include the, the vehicles that's in that window. Okay?
I just left it, I actually didn't include no vehicles in it, I just left it.
Nice one, Charlie.
Yeah. So if something else needs to happen, yeah, we'll take it.
All right. And you have questions for Lee? Roger, you talked to him a minute ago, do you have a question? Miss Carr or go ahead, I'm sorry.
I suggested months ago that we'd send a memo to his department head, asking them to, let Lee service her vehicle, you know? And it kind of got brushed off, but.
Well, he does all mine, so.
We go ahead with the resolution and get it done.
Okay.
He's going to start doing all mine?
Can I add that note, that one note about the sheriff's vehicles? That ad will go in the paper, it's going to hurt for two weeks, starting Wednesday. The seventeenth will be the bid opening for that, if we receive any bids.
And it's the same package, you know? Word, word before excluding the sheriff's.
Does he have a question?
His sheriff's only one already, I'll say that back for you.
Did you have a question for Lee or what?
Yeah. Wait, um, it's logging issues. How are you, like, they're coming in here and they're, they're logging for weeks of time until one of us catches them and then we call their attention, then they put gravel out. How can we make it where, we find them, we do something to stop them because it's the same ones? It's not like they don't know, it's like they play dumb until they're caught. And it's getting to be really aggravating when they've already done, you got so much mud out on the road.
Here's my, I guess my problem with all of it. And it's, it's going to come down to opinion, Bill. If the, if the outcome that we're wanting is there's zero mud on that road, then we might as well pass a resolution says we can no logging during winter time in Cleveland, Cal. I ride out there and look, and a lot of phone calls I get, there's mud all over the road. It's, you know, you get out there and, yeah, it's painted, but there's no, you know, it's not chunks, it's not built up. But, yeah, you can see where they pull it out, and, yeah, the road is red, like the one over on eighteen. Those, those guys had a broom, but every time they'd go out there and broom that road, they just painted it red. But they was brooming the mud out of it. In my opinion, as long as that, as long as there's no clumps and stuff on it. And, and a lot of them, and I'm going to also say this too, though, very few, I guess it comes down to the amount of gravel. Nearly all of them come in and put some gravel down and get started. But then a week later, it's mashed in the ground, and that's when we start getting a little bit of tracking out. I mean, how much?
So what you're saying is when they go in to get started, they're putting gravel down, and then after two or three weeks, it's gone?
It's gone, and then that's when they start tracking, and that's when I get a phone call, and that's when I go out there and say, hey, get some more gravel, it's a little bit of dirt, so there's more gravel on it, but.
Well, you, um, I guess the issue is, and I've got pictures all over my phone where I've got mud out on the road. I've got very little gravel out. And, and it's like, how many times do you have to keep telling them?
And then it's from, and I'm not trying to dig out clumps, but that's like some of those that you call and tell me you've got mud out on the road. When I go out there and look at them, yeah, you can see where they're tracked out, but, I mean, the farmer's went and got his hay out of the barn, it's got that much mud on the road. It's to me, I swear, I guess it's my opinion of what's damaging the road or what ain't. And that's, maybe my opinion's too lax, but.
Well, when we've got roads that are crumbling already, and they're not getting a base, and they're coming up on that and digging it out even more, we got problems. Because they are tearing our roads up. Because they're not putting that base down. They put a base down fifty feet away from the road.
If they're, if there's, if they're tearing at the sides of the roads, it's crumbling, that's a different story. I'm just, I'm talking mud on the road.
Uh, but see, we have that all through, like, look at the tower road. They have literally beaten that road down. Sixty-six now, because they're logging so much on it, it's already beginning to be, you know, they're eating it down. I mean, how, I mean, how do we make them more accountable for what they're doing?
I mean, if you start writing tickets, that goes to, that's not your locker zone. Your ticket goes to the timber, whether that's an individual or whoever.
And this is, I hate, this was addressed a long time ago, and it caused quite, you know, some controversy. And then the lobby group, it's the forestry group, you know, and they're a strong lobby group.
But you obviously, you obviously are immune to it, though. You write tickets all day long, and I want them to go to the water.
But, you know, I would love to just sort that out, all the pictures that I've done over the, since I've been in office, and I still have them. And lay them out and say, you don't have a problem with this.
We're talking just mud on the road, there's going to be a lot of them that I.
Well, I mean, it's, it's the point, the reason they have mud on the road is because they don't put gravel out. And they'll, they'll walk it until somebody calls their hands to it and say, you know.
But you can't put enough gravel out and not track something on the road.
It's different than tracking out. Okay. The other day, I hadn't called you to go over there to get them to put more gravel down, and they, which they did. They did get some more gravel out. If they had not done that, there would have been so much mud on that road of them pulling out. Because you seen already what they, and it was, it wasn't raining that day. But I, I mean, I'm like, they would just let them just keep, and it's always the same ones.
That's, I mean, that's.
Does anybody have, does anybody else have any problems?
Mr. Heald, Mr. Heald.
I would like to see the burden of the permit taken from the landlord and placed on the locker. The man cutting the law, hauling the law.
And that's going to take later to slice.
Right. And I have gone forward with this with no luck at all. And if, if you read the regs, you know, it's real, we see what's in fishy, but the bottom line is, if we, if Lee goes out and writes up to the man doing all the damage, the landlord's got to take it.
There's a lot of time for them. A lot, a lot of time for them to come into the county, the permit's been out for over a year, right?
That's a lot of time.
I think what you, what you would come out better, for what they do, they hold all the permits, especially they're working in Georgia. And they stay four, five days with the rain here, they've come here, where if you'll put a six months, after six months, you got to pull a new permit in.
You back in the legislation, because you're missing those with the law and regulations from the state of that one.
Yeah, we know that changed, so you might wanna just look it up.
Well, is, is, is timber our biggest problem? No, no, timber's our biggest product?
Most of mine, most.
So it's very powerful, yeah.
In, in my district, uh, it's timber company.
Yeah, but I mean, stay wide, you said, isn't that the number one product?
But most, it's, for instance, we had a logger, what, a year ago, that tore up one of our roads. The company, and it's owned by the timber company, that tract land was owned by a timber company, which, what they're cutting now is owned by the timber company. They had no idea that their, who they contracted out is doing that kind of damage. See, that, that's, someone knows, they've got to be, uh, brought to their attention.
They don't care.
Yes, sir.
Over seventy percent of Cleveland County is owned by timber companies. And yet, we have to maintain the lactals, you know, the rattle rates and, and do the mowing and all that stuff. Meanwhile, those big corporates are paying very little property tax.
Hey, I agree, I, I understand, and I've been, before you guys got here, I saw loggers show up at commission meetings, and they're, they're, um, pretty powerful group, and they're a pretty intimidating group.
And what, in our county, now, it's mind-blowing larger companies.
Before, before you, this group, before you group came, came in here, there was a big argument between the commission and that, and that's what changed the rules, because it was a little bit tighter, and they, they, of course, there was some angry loggers and all that, but it, it's not as tight as it was before. Remember, I think you may remember that it was a little bit tighter before the regulations, right?
Uh, before, yeah.
Okay.
That was back in the, yeah, that was back in the center, the man and girl went around and around a couple times, that's, you remember?
Yeah.
That's when we had that five, that crazy five thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But all that, you know, because of that, it brought attention, but, but you saw how powerful that, that lobbying group is.
Well, the state of Georgia, they increased the taxes on timber land. So I went and asked our representatives and senators and so forth, why can we not do that?
Yeah.
They told me it was a losing battle, they said, you know, there's too much money involved and lobbyists and all that stuff, and.
I guess my biggest issue is that you've got the one logging company that'll come in here and do the right thing, put their gravel out until they get started, then you have this, this other one that'll come out and not put a bit of gravel until it's made to. I mean, it, it's gotta be.
Well, we did have a process and finding and, uh, uh, giving them a citation and what else.
You can shut them down.
They have to stop.
They got, they get a lot of mud on the road, the sheriff's department can shut them down.
They leak and shut them down, too.
Well, then they just maybe just write them a citation and shut them down, like.
Back years ago, when you was talking about, they went back to the police officer, it was, it was forced it then.
So we moved that over to Lee and Chris, you know, on that one.
I guess my thing is, is, I mean, to take my opinion out, you know, we're gonna give zero dollars, is, is, I guess I didn't know what y'all's standard is.
It's the zero, it's not as, you know, like I said, you had not went out there and had him bring more gravel in, or, I always get the same story every time I talk to them, that gravel coming, that gravel coming. Why didn't you get gravel three days ago? Instead of waiting until somebody comes out? Or they, there's no bite from us.
Sir, well, what you're saying is, if you go out to the same person three times, you're drawing a citation for five hundred, that would be, would you?
That's not gonna work again.
I, I don't care who goes to, just go to somebody.
No, to, to, most of the time, like I said, a lot of these are.
Care who goes to you.
Are.
Didn't go into me. You're, there's a lot of people coming around my house.
I don't have.
Alright.
Okay, let's move on to the mission.
Yes, sir, the business. Uh, two, three years ago, when I was on the legislative committee, this guy brought up, and there was a guy sitting like three people from me, he pretty much jumped up and told him, I'll go to Haley, and he was the representative. And he said, his father was the biggest logger in Alabama, and he told him how many thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars he paid every year, and he said, nothing, I'm gonna get to the legislature. Now, I don't know, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what.
Well, I guess, yeah, we, we understand that, I guess, the only thing, anything that we got is the little five hundred dollar citation, and we can shut them down until they get the gravel out. After three times, we're gonna give them a citation, and they need to have gravel out before they can bring it back up three times a month, and that's it, I mean, at least we can do that, right? Sir? Okay. Are y'all happy now?
Oh, that's.
Not all of you did, but we gotta, we gotta hold on to the cannibals.
But three times, I think if you want, three times.
It was long, yeah, it was, we can't do it anytime.
Oh.
Okay.
Anything else for Lee?
Or we, or we patch it later.
We'll, 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 we'll.
Thank you, sir.
Well, first thing we go first, uh, last month's report, uh, we logged patrol miles, about sixteen thousand nine hundred fifty-four miles. For the whole month, we had eighty-two single factors, twenty-nine one RS, fourteen O BRS, uh, that was ninety-five reports taken, uh, got a total of one thousand two hundred twenty-four business checks. And also, you know that check, as far as the surplus?
Um, the surplus equipment, we, that, that auction closed on Friday, and we've already had some of that paid, um, so we still like a few that, that likes paying.
Should be over, huh?
Closer to eight thousand dollars than seven thousand, uh, on that stuff that y'all surplus a year ago, um, so that should be coming into the general fund.
So we're basically going to set it at eight. So, first proposal, what's that, first sheet? Looks like the first one there, like, for house security. So that position, it's still standing vacant at the moment, uh, we've been trying to recruit and fill that position, we still had no success of decent laborers they can pay. So we'd like to propose to raise that for house security, start the pay as the same as a certified deputy, which would be sixteen forty-six an hour. Um, I feel it would make it more attractive, uh, as far as trying to hire certified guys, if we could get that rate.
I think you have a question.
Just, just taking one at a time, on that, uh, courthouse security, in the past, uh, we always broke down the, the, we'll call it the two dollars a mile, I think it's two dollars, about two dollars a mile.
I remember that number, it's, it's between two and three, yeah.
But in the past, when you, at, that, you know, like in my office, we put a section of the light bill, you know, and it's divided in their department down there, and, you know, some of it comes out of the general fund, some of it don't. And it's based off that, that, the way it works. I think we ought to go ahead and take that security that we set up for that and just be broken down amongst all the departments down there. And then that way, part of that security for the courthouse will be aligned out in the business budget. And then, uh, that would help, I think that would help us enough to make the difference.
I, I think that would be smart, because we're constantly, every time we get requested for courthouse security, it, it's, it's almost all of the offices that's asked for us, I think, I think that would be fair.
And the reason I'm saying is, is you know how Georgia's work, as far as hurt budget comes out of, out of, out of the deep pot, and then when we get here, you know, I don't know, but I think it's gonna probably make us on that two dollars or more.
That's gonna be right around there, yeah.
I just wanted, right now, uh.
The issue that we have right now is we're constantly getting requests, I know the, the felony, or circuit judge will be in, um, some, doing some felony hearings, and they're requesting courthouse security. I have a juvenile hearing set for tomorrow afternoon at two thirty, which is probably gonna cause a huge issue when, once the dad shows up, that they're requesting security on, and I'm having to take deputies off the road, um.
Or call them in.
Or, or call them in, and if we call somebody in, we're having to pay overtime for that, to cover these special hearings, so, uh, this is the first step of trying to, to fill this position, or guarantee we're gonna be able to fill it. I mean, I, I don't know, but this, this would make it a little bit more attractive of some of these folks that, that may be interested, so.
Do you, do you guys commission, want to put a resolution on the commission?
I would.
Alright. New business, consent, gentlemen?
Tom, I'm gonna use, make a note and for both of you guys, that we're gonna split that security amongst all offices.
Big business.
New business, sorry, we're gonna do first, this first resolution here, if you're gonna do it immediately, you're gonna be, um, raising it, you're gonna be making a motion to change it on the, uh, the order chart, right?
Order chart, yeah, and budget.
But, but you may have to do the budget, you can do the budget later.
But you're gonna have to amend the budget position or not, or not?
You are, but you got time to amend the budget, I mean, what I'm saying, first of all, you.
I'm just, I'm, I'm tired of her, the budget time is making notes that we're gonna split it, ain't got nothing to do from here until September.
Right.
We're just gonna full steam ahead of it.
Alright, so as of right now, a resolution is just being changed on the order chart. Everybody give that, new business, alright? Well, just to remind you, and just say in the amendments, when you hire somebody.
And, and that, what we would like to know.
Now you're gonna come back and do it again.
What we, what we would like to do is as soon as possible, we'll start advertising that.
At that rate, yeah.
At that rate, and then, and then, you know, if we hire, if we can get, if we can go ahead and have the approval to hire, so you have a amendment in the budget, it'd solve all of our issues at one time.
They're gonna have to base with that position.
You can just amend it, and this is gonna come out.
But it's gonna take two resolutions to do it. One resolution's gonna say you're gonna raise the pay, and another resolution's gonna say you're gonna do the authorization chart and amend the budget.
I mean, that's sheriff's, basically. Right?
Yeah.
Right now. Yeah, okay.
I think that then later on in the year, two, a lot of money back to that.
Okay. So, will you do a figure on that one, and then, but, second resolution, new business? But I mean, you're gonna have to have one passed to the other one.
Yeah. Yeah. One of y'all passed up, and then we just go.
Alright, so that's two resolutions, two more resolutions on new business. Okay. Alright. But then the next budget, you're gonna look at possibly, um, spreading out the letter, spreading the letter, but, alright. Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, the next one is about surpluses of the vehicles, uh, with listed below, there's two vehicles, they're no longer being used, they're unusable due to mechanic issues, uh, our law request to surplus those, so they'd be able to be auctioned off, and just as soon as possible.
Y'all give you that, consent, gentlemen? Alright. If you get those two, listen, we'll get them on, yeah.
I believe they're on there.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is the SRO training, uh, I said, we're proud to have free and all the, our, the county schools, you know, I said, I want to thank y'all for what you've done, and the school board for that, but also, uh, but they also need the specialized training to be certified SRO, uh, like I said, we've done some research, uh, found a school, Patrick has, he done all of it, uh, so, national SRO training is in June, two thousand forty-three. Uh, like I said, we'd like to ask for that training to be paid, or see if y'all could help pay for it, uh, as soon as possible, uh, because the, when you said the.
April bird is the cutoff, I miss, and, uh, I talked to Enid today about it, he called, and I'd also been emailing, um, this coach one back and forth. So, I, I, initially, when this came up, um, we were very fortunate to have one of our SROs, uh, already certified, he just needs some continuing ed. Uh, so he, he's kind of been guiding us on, on some of this SRO stuff, and, uh, so we could, we could, as the old saying is, we could kind of kill a multiple bird with one stone here. Uh, this conference or one SRO that's already certified can get his continuing ed hours, and then the other two that need certification, they can get their certification during this conference, that means one hotel room, and, and the hotel that I checked, it, it had all, and I know there's some policies on that, but this particular one, uh, had two beds and a, and a sofa sleeper, they could room together, one vehicle. Uh, if we could get them all through at one time, it would actually save money in the long run, um, so, um, this would get them their training, um, before the next school year. Um, and, and like I said, it would, it would actually save us money in the long run to keep from having to send them all separate places and stuff, because this, this training is not offered, um, you know, local, uh, and then I have attached in, in the proposal what the, and initially, when I emailed Lisa, I thought that the training would start on Monday, but the actual basic course begins on Sunday, they finally sent me the schedule. Uh, so we would actually need to get them there on Saturday night, and, uh, they would, they could come back on Friday after class ended on Friday, so, and like I said, it would, it was, they would all three be together, um, the hotel is.
And one of the things is on the three SROs, uh, because we haven't got them in place, and they sent the money for, for the half of the year, right, Lisa? So by the end of the year, what Chad is saying is any money that's left over can go to headwind out.
And that's one thing that I talked to Enid about, I talked to, initially, I called the school, and that's what I meant to say earlier, I called, I called Chad to ask if they could help with this, and Chad's response was, was they didn't pay for Hecklin and Rambers to get certified, so if they didn't want to make anybody mad, we're paying for ours. So Chad did say that he felt like there would be a little extra money in what, um, what they sent us for the payroll, which should be around twelve hundred dollars, um, that was just his rough calculation, so, and he said that he would not have a problem with that money being put toward this training at the end of the year. Uh, it, it just, you, you know, see what's left over and put it all toward it, then, then it would maybe cut that in half.
And that is, that you gotta have a training, so we have, yeah.
Well, this conference each year, it offers a lot of updates, and, and, you know, even us as deputies, when we were going in schools all the time and trying to keep up with it, it's just, it's a, it's a nightmare sometimes with what these kids come up with, sometimes they're, they're a lot smarter, of course, than, than what our, our normal folks, adults that we deal with, so, this, this, this training is specialized for juvenile, uh, dealing with juveniles, and I think it's very critical that they get that training.
So this year, this year is a, a once a year.
So, once they're, um, SRO certified, once they're, that's a, um, national certification, once they're SRO certified, they would only need that, um, continuing education from that.
Just the conference.
And so, and, and y'all can see in that packet, y'all can see in that packet, that the actual certification is five fifty versus this, the continuing ed would be like two twenty-five, so, so that, that, so.
Yeah, so it'd be about high, what do you mean, next year, that's in the room?
Oh, okay.
I'll put that on.
I have a question.
Cause now.
Well, according to what I read right here, they have them registered on Sunday.
Well, if you look at the top of that schedule, it says, um, it says, natural basic course begins Sunday, June fourth at eight central time, so it actually begins on Sunday.
Yeah, once you go down to the Monday, it says opening ceremony.
That's for the actual, that's for all of other classes.
Conference, I believe.
Well, they're living bunk together, I'm, I'm giving.
Yeah, it's kind of, they're running two separate things there, they're running the conference, which during the conference offers all of those different continuing education classes, however, the two that needs the, that needs the actual certification, theirs will, theirs would actually start on Sunday. So, in, in, in reality, the, the one that only needs, um, the continuing ed, he wouldn't have to be there until Sunday, but, you know, if the other two has to be there, we might as well just go ahead and send them.
Get a room.
Did Ramber and Hecklin sending their people in?
I'm not sure. They, I, well, Ramber is gonna have to send their new SRO. I'm not sure. They, I'm, well, Ramber is gonna have to send, their new SRO starts, um, this week. So, I would assume that theirs gonna have to go somewhere. I don't know if they're sending them to this particular one, um, 'cause I know he's not certified, but Hefflin's got certified within the year, so I don't know if they'll send them to this one or not. I haven't spoken with him. Just in my research, the, you know, this would cover all three of them in one, one vein. You know, we'd have to pay, if we separated them out, we'd have to take their separate hotel rooms and it would end up costing us a lot more hotel wise, so.
Yes, but...
Alright, so y'all with that on consent agenda? Mark, now, are you, so does that need to be a part of amending, amending the budget? Because it all comes down to money, right?
Yeah, it's 23, whatever it is.
So, what is...
Now, that, now that budget, did it be amended once we see what we got that over? Or we know? Well, see, we'll see what, what happens as this money runs out. But this money here can be carried out of us for months, so the checks will be coming from the general office. Okay?
Oh, it's possible for him to have.
He got it next week.
Yeah, he can have it.
And it's a who?
Jason, Jason can see all of this here.
Uh, you, 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 you...
Yes, sir.
Uh, one of the things that is, going back to the trash pickup, uh, we still need to determine if we're planning on making Sam or whoever you hire for that job full time. I've talked with the sheriff and I've talked with, uh, about where we'd spend a lot more time, where we would set up a schedule on trash pickup, 'cause that's most of what we're after. And we've got to get something started on this. And at that point, you know, the sheriff forgot the vehicle and the trailer and everything. Uh, are y'all, what do you, I mean, he's, he's the sheriff, does it, if it ain't pouring down rain two or three days a week, we start picking up trash along the ride ways. And then, other times, whatever we got, you know, at least two days a week, I mean, like today, the sheriff let me have two inmates today to go down, we finished up the morgue, then we built an election room for Ryan. We got that done, you seen it yet? So, you, 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 y'all right by seeing that or stopped by and see what all we got done with time, we got that place reorganized. But I think we'll really need to think serious about making that full time pickup, because Terry don't want to work just to, you know, and then, some days when he works, he, he's not gonna pick up trash. So, we gotta get somebody that's willing to, you know, pick up trash.
I'm gonna afford it if they just work for the county. This, like I was at Harps last week, Trina Shrubbery, I ain't gonna be forward if they only go do work for everybody in the county. If, if they're gonna do county work, I'm doing it for full time.
But, so you're, you're not gonna be okay with working for the nonprofit organizations?
No. Or it's good, it's good we got way more money than we do.
The nonprofit organization, you know, that's always helped with they know, and same thing with, uh, some of our county buildings and all, they're nonprofit organizations, you know, they help them.
Well, I, I suggest, I mean, for you guys to get into, in a sense of voting, just put on the agenda if you want to do that.
That's right.
And y'all vote for it straight up and straight down. I, I know what you express your opinion and, and that's, uh, it's honorable, but...
I think, I think one thing would be is, at the end of the day, the sheriff will direct his employee. So, I think what, what my game plan is, is I don't think any of them are gonna go out there and, and, and put down, run five days a week. So, we take three days out of the week, especially, you know, if they got some stuff going on where it's pouring down rain and they wanna go over and, and do this or do that. And I have talked with David How about, uh, the school board, uh, funding some of this employee. Uh, it's almost to the point of, you know, we've been doing it for years, furnishing this employee with gas and D vehicles and tires and everything else. And it ain't that we don't mind doing it, but, uh, he sort of wanted to stay it up, you know, in a sense that, well, maybe we just do, uh, two SRO officers and a, and a Terry. And I said, no, we're not gonna do that. I tell you that right now. And so, what I would suggest, if Terry still wants to do part-time work, let him hire, let them hire Terry, furnish Terry a truck, and then Terry can do this work and they're paid. We're not gonna pay. But Terry could probably still come and check out an inmate and work for the school directly. And I think we're just get out of school business.
We can, to add to that, we've got a lot of cemeteries across the county that, that a lot of people don't know about that our work release has taken care of. And if we, we cut that out, then that's gonna, uh, that's gonna cause a burden on a lot of these elderly folks that we've been helping.
They're like, right, they're not able to do, uh, they do several ideas for it.
I, I think, I think, you know, the perception is, and I work across this, is like, you know, usually y'all, in the past, have always provided me with a little help putting out election stuff. And this last time, I only got, on the first day, on, on the, on the last year's election, I only had one person, and I didn't know it, but the city of Ramber was moving. So, that got a model aware, so it, it felt like the city of Ramber had more priority than vote day. Now, I didn't get mad and show out or anything, but it's, that's the perception. I mean, the, the Terry gets it. Sometimes we were the, you know, and I, you know, we wanna keep a good working relationship with everybody, but, but if we're gonna pay them full time, really, we, we would like most of the love and attention, you know?
And I, and I, and that's, that's sort of what, and I, and I, and I, and I'm just, that's the reason I think we need to make a change to where Terry is part-time and, and you know, he, he's gonna go in, he's gonna go this way. You might say he's going that way, but you know what it'll take. He's going that way. And you take that and go to it. That's the reason I think we need to put somebody in the position, this, uh, the sheriff or Lane or Patrick will, will give him a list and will, you know, work with, I don't know, for a year. So, I'm gonna pay $60,000 and get it picked up one time. And I think it'd get a good deal out of that.
And one thing that we have to remember as well is, is the, the quality of inmates that we're getting. Uh, it's, it's really tough when, when Wayne and John and I are, we're all three tasked with picking some of these work release inmates. And yeah, they, you know, some of them are in there on minor infractions, but their whole mentality, um, once they get a little bit of freedom, is a huge liability for us. So, there may be times where we're, we're running thin, um, but, you know...
For this jail population in general, right now, we're at 48.
Forty-eight, well.
And they're letting them out faster than we can put them in there.
And they're letting out, like, higher class folks, like the, the higher class catching felony folks.
So, we just have a new bond schedule. Well, they have a bond schedule, it's the bonds. They, uh, when did they send that? Last week, week four?
Four months.
Uh, they sent us, they should, they used to have a bond schedule we worked between for release classification. Well, now, the, the circuit judge sent a bond, it's a, we know, bonds are already set for each charge. We don't have a schedule.
For example, trash can, I think they're fed in there, or something, we could set up a minimum of $1,000 bond, but now it's $20,000.
What we're trying to set up is a priority for...
And that's straight from the circuit judge, yeah, so...
You know, I'd rather take him and have another, have, have this guy that's spending $60,000 for, you know, I believe, I think we gotta set a priority in it, and, and try it.
Well, we're controlling this, that we can't control. That's about one time. And it's not, you know, we can't control this.
Alright, how do y'all want to do it? How you wanna put on the agenda? You wanna look to make it full-time now, or what? Is he still on payroll?
Who?
Terry, yes.
Yeah, he's part-time.
But he don't wanna be full-time.
He's a temporary worker.
He's retired.
That position went from a full-time to a temporary part-time when he retired.
Well, it sort of all blew up anyway.
It's all the way back to a full-time position until he retired.
And we started it this way because, uh, the real, real reason we started this way is 'cause we couldn't get no inmates. You know, Terry didn't work for a long time because there wasn't nobody to get. And plus, the sheriff wasn't nobody out. And, uh...
So, if he goes full-time, that's when we put him out, so you definitely want to hire somebody, so...
We've got somebody interested in that, in this.
Well, how do you, y'all wanna make a resolution? Alright, the resolution would be to change the org chart and also amend the budget, right? Now, I mean, I'd give both of them.
I mean, make, is, is the commission gonna pay the salary? I mean, we pay Terry's salary.
Right.
We gonna pay this full-time salary?
Or...
The sheriff is gonna pay them, he's gonna work for him. But, I mean, it's, it's, it's numbers and all the people that work for the sheriff, we pay the salary.
It's a correction officer's position, and it's always been full-time until Terry, just, just this budget here, it's looking at our temporary part-time position.
Yeah, that the commission pays.
Right, right.
Comes off the county admin.
Yeah, it's all about that, yeah.
Yeah, but, okay, here, here's the only thing I gotta say about it. If it rains all week and you got somebody sitting on their butt drawing a check, and they ain't got nothing to do. If you don't have no inmates, you got a person sitting there drawing a check, ain't got nothing to do. So, I mean, I, I don't know what the solution is, but I can see all kinds of problems.
But, but that really, that wouldn't, I mean, because there's other projects that doesn't consist of being outside. You know, there's a lot of building, cleaning, things that that work release program can be doing. It's not just about outside.
We, we've got enough in-house stuff that we could probably, you know...
Yeah. And this is, this is a correction officer's position. So, we're, so Terry, Terry wouldn't go and transport, so you go pick up groceries for us, stuff like that, that other corrections officers have to do too, you know, they have to do. I mean, it's not just work release, it's, it's not.
It's not, but there's a lot more to it than just in, outside of work.
What I'm asking is y'all, do you, are y'all, put this on resolution to ask that it's a change of org, right?
I understand that.
But it works for them. But right now, it's been paying, you'd be, well, probably the easiest way to do it is just adding an employee to the sheriff's department and taking our part-time employee off. Okay, yeah.
So, you change the county admin, org chart, and it can change their org chart.
It's also gonna affect their budget, right? Okay. You could, you could probably combine two of those resolutions together, for especially the, uh, the amended budget part, 'cause you, you can forget, you know, the wrong way of costing.
Back to, back to the issue I brought up. I don't wanna work for board education. I, I mean, I was saying, they're paying maintenance people that are $70,000 a year. I'm not wrong about them. You know, they got two maintenance guys that, that's making $70,000 a year. And I don't think we should be paying to wash their buses and move their books or whatever they do. I don't know what they do.
Well, well, you know, and that, and that, and that, do y'all, when y'all make the resolution, do you want the resolution to say something like that? And I'm, and I'm, not just asking on Terry, you're here asking everybody. You want the resolution to say something?
The commission's on the road. But now, you still got your nonprofit, you've got your, um, I mean, any used a lot of red, the, um...
We took, we, we took grass, so, I don't even, well, I mean, like at the chamber, we took grass at the, at, at the library, we took grass at, at all of our facilities here, but I think any other trash doesn't.
Well, let's find any, any, we could, grass that, that can use something like that.
Alright, so, uh, Lisa, you making some sense of this?
Well, we can't tell the sheriff how to supervise his employee.
Wouldn't, but, but, I mean, but wait a minute. I'm not saying you, you can't, you can't tell them, but you, you, I mean, y'all could work with them and also talk about...
I think we could, we could solve this by, what is our priority gonna be with this job? If our priority is gonna be X, Y, Z, then that's what we're gonna make that priority be. And that's what John can tell this particular employee, okay, this is what our priorities are. Uh, if it comes up that the school needs help, um, you know, that may be something that we can approach at that time and, and of course, put that employee in, in his, like Mr. Hill's talking about. Uh, I think John could, could review that on a, on a per case basis.
But I, I think one of the one thing that hurts sort of right here is I'm over at that school working myself. Terry's over, and, and Terry's working too, I'm telling y'all. And we over at school, we're working. Then you got three inmates on the hill, two inmates with us, and, uh, and what hurts the most is, is they wanna figure out how to belittle it down to where they can get 10, uh, pay 10 cents. Well, I think if you give them a year of washing their buses on their own, they might come back and say, let's go 50/50 on this employee, and we're gonna continue to wash the bus and do this. But what they want is, is the same, and I should, I didn't say how I said it to David, but what they want is, is with the SRO officer, where they get them 10 months of the year pretty much, you know, when they need them, and pay about the same price as they do as the SRO. But we're not gonna do that. If they want that, this is not a have to. I think that if the school wants them, as we've been doing in the past, if, if the commission agrees with it, I'm just talking about for myself, but I, I mean, I just said, well, you can go hard, y'all can hard Terry part-time if you want to, or whatever. But I'm not gonna, I mean, we got a lot, we gotta get done. And we gotta get, and our, our priority is we want the trash picked up on side of the roads. We need to give $60,000 to whoever y'all talking about, or we can hire this person and we can start, and make a big dent. And, and it's contingency. I mean, I, I mean, we picked up the trash, we gonna let it work. It's right like that next week.
And two, like I said, during the summer, I mean, we can use SROs and a couple inmates to still look pick up trash also.
Yeah.
You have a job description for this person, or are you gonna leave job description saying it's what's out here?
It's correction officer. They're supervised inmates, it's a regular corrections officer. The only difference is changing Terry back from a temporary part-time to a full-time.
To a full-time, somebody else.
Right, it's always been that way until last year.
Okay, so, that's what I'm asking. So, if we're changing the org chart to take that off of the county admin and put it on the sheriff's department, then we wanna use that same job description, that's what we're gonna do. I just, I'm gonna...
I didn't go to the county, I always bring out the sheriff's department budget.
Is it? I was thinking, same, same county admin.
Well, and, and back to, we can, you know, if y'all tell, you know, tell us what priority is, and, and that's what's built in, then, then that's what we can...
It hurts, you know, like, in the summer, I've been, and, and why, and then you've got other projects, 'cause I, I do a lot of projects in the community building, and a lot of times I need them, I need that help, but I can't get it because they're at the school, you know, for two months, they're at the school.
And that's the two crime marks we picking up trash.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, you know, as we move forward with our counseling study, you know, we're not having to go over and do some, uh, you know, some heaven out here or there on the outside, if people go into the main office part of the way we, we want to.
Alright, so we got a resolution, changing the order, and also looking at the possibility that's gonna affect that, the budget, if y'all wanna change the budget too, if I'm there.
Well, tell us what we gotta change, then we'll go with that.
Well, she gonna have to figure out money.
Because right now, the money's going into sheriff's budget for Terry's part-time work.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so, so you just see what you got left for the rest of the year, and that's what it'll be, plus benefits. Not, well, it's...
They isn't getting the fits.
No, I'm talking about the guy that they got, Sam, but he, we don't want the same other, whatever his style is, is what it's gonna be. So, if you look up Sam, and then I said it's gonna be the same law.
Same law.
Because you're already an end, you're already an end, I said.
And that's, that was...
We're gonna be ending it in January, though, right?
Well, it's, 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 it's gonna be doing away with a part-time, he's a correction officer, Terry.
Do you not have to advertise for this position?
You still gonna be having it.
Yeah, we still gotta add and replace it.
I know, I know, but what I'm saying is, they gonna replace him, so they can do whatever they want to. I mean, they tell them, they tell this one to pick up trash, they tell that one to be, they wish they could do it.
Yeah, you don't have to be saying every time, do you?
No.
Okay. Alright, new business?
Well, are you gonna take the, the $60,000 out of your budget for picking up trash? Who's gonna take that?
If, uh, if I'm...
Who would? So, it's standing, we can do, and I ain't gonna know. I'm just trying to get started picking up trash and getting the shirts and talking about three days a week at least. I don't, I, I think we have our five days a week to get the trash.
New business. Alright, so we, we're ready. Alright.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
The LNTCA resolution about the...
Vehicles?
Who didn't decide if that was consent agenda or new business?
Y'all okay?
You asked a question, but I don't think it got answered.
On the, on buying the vehicle, consent or new business consent? Everybody give a consent? Okay. Les, will you go over everything?
I do have to next with April and one of the board members from Randolph County, Alan Shumpert, would like to come and just talk with us.
You got a name?
April, I'll get, I'll send it to the contacts.
You put all these in there? We ask them to hold it to short, ten minutes?
Yes, they're just kind of gonna give us the inside on what, you know... They just kind of gonna give us the inside on what, you know, how those operate and more.
Do we need to give them a lifetime or ten minutes?
I think so.
Let me know, let me know.
Okay.
Talking about the Alon Shelter, we went down, uh, last week and, uh, and spent a good three, two or three hours down there at Alon Shelter, again, in Randolph County, maybe the lady down there about the liability and stuff. The lady that is certified down there, we gotta have certified tech, you have to have certified, one that's dispenses the medicine and stuff like that, and she's probably gonna come and explain all that. That's like a three-day class, it sounds like, and you use the word certification, it's a part of the example of us would probably love to do that. So, anyway, uh, the mayor of Hefflin, uh, Mayor Brown went with us and, uh, and, and put his ability of looking at the facility and everything, which we feel that we can do a lot better facility. And when we got there talking about the 501(c)(1) and everything, and, uh, doing the building and building and all, what he would, is gonna look at, getting with the city council members and trying to go in with us. If we're willing to put up two hundred thousand dollars earmark it to the Alon Shelter, then the city of Hefflin is gonna try to pick, you know, within reason, anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty. When you get down and look at all the cages and the way we're gonna build ours, uh, the two hundred will not, you know, it's, 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 by the time everything's gotta be done, you, you went down and looked at it, and, and what Robbie wants to do is, instead of doing these wired cages where they don't, where, you know, those places, and all they're talking about, well, you need to get this, and you need to get that one, so what Robbie wants to do, and he's got the forms, is, uh, is go in there and build walls out of concrete, and fix it where it can all be washed down, and, and, you know, you don't have to worry about it, and all you gotta have is one metal door on the front, that is one of the suggestions, you know, he made a lot of good suggestions, didn't he? So, uh, if we're gonna do this, but what the city, what Robbie said is that he would do the agreement with, uh, 501(c)(1), uh, through the city of Hefflin, which will include the county as a whole as a shared investor in this, and then this is the way it works. It ain't like this, like Ramford or Hefflin has a say-so of this Alon Shelter. When the Alon Shelter comes in, they gotta limit how many dogs, you know, because she says, now, we get grief from this little city, that little city, and that little city, but she says, at the end of the day, it's a standalone, and if you're, if you're looking for the out of it, the lady, the lady certified by the state says that if she worked aside, you know, tomorrow she gets mad, she's gotta leave, she's gotta think about the law, because she has to follow the state law. She's gotta call the state and say, I am turning it in, I am, you know, stopping. Now, the board can probably put somebody in her place, but once that place sets storming for six months, it rotates back to still an Alon Shelter, but it's, it, it, another 501(c)(1) could come in. Now, she says, she says, that's, that's in our bylaws and that's in our books, but at the end of the day, I think they've been running that, that, that for nearly twenty years. So, you know, what, I mean, but, you know, when you do something like this, you gotta look at the outs and how you want it to happen. But, uh, but I was really encouraged by listening to the people, and I think, uh, if we can, uh, if, if the commission seems fit to, me working with Robbie, uh, we're gonna start flagging the property, where we're gonna build it, and talk to all the property owners around there about what we're gonna do over there. So, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and clear off the site, once we make a decision, if we're gonna, if we're serious about this, if we're gonna earmark two hundred thousand dollars towards the Alon Shelter.
She also probably told you the liability.
Yeah, she says their insurance and everything runs about, uh, four thousand for one to secure, but then they have this other insurance, they say anybody gets bit, they gotta go through all those shots. That was, I was like, couldn't...
The liability was taken out from the county.
Yeah, definitely, or it's in your municipality.
The solid of the 501(c)...
It's all across on that 501(c).
So, uh, I think, I think, uh, that would sort of put it where, I think it's probably better, because even though when you talk about economic development, stuff like that, you better go through your municipality, and I think it'd be better if they're willing to take this on, and, uh, and we can get it started as soon as we get some dry ground, uh, when he's got two tractors setting over there.
I was like, somebody from the city of Ramford would get involved.
Well, they said, they said all of us is gonna get involved.
And Robbie does come in, Robbie, Rodney does have to be a part of it, you know, they have talked, and I talked to the city of Fudders, and they're willing to step out too. I haven't talked to city of Edwardsville, but now Fudders is willing to step out there too.
Well, that's, you know, I know there's a lot of land, uh, animal lovers all over the county, and some of the stuff that, uh, talking with the ladies down there and talking with Robbie, where you do a monthly card, and you send out the cards out across the county, where people will make a, uh, a yearly allotment, almost like, you know, with the chamber, how you do, where, you know, I know it's like the guy I was talking to today about painting the black car out here. I mean, he's ready to write a pretty good-sized check, but what I think we gotta do is get it set up, so they will have what they need, and then the money that comes in will go for the running.
Right.
So, so we need to put a resolution on top of it to earmark two hundred thousand for the shelter, without that on it?
Once the, once the commission has made a decision to do that, he's not gonna start moving, pushing, and digging until he knows he can start digging and pushing.
So, we're not gonna have a work session, and we'll get a business plan, or we're not gonna do anything, we're just gonna...
Well, I, well, we're gonna start, we're gonna start working and putting something together and...
Just earmarking.
Well, what, what I...
Well, I want earmarking something for Ramford, how about that? I mean, you need to hear the business proposition. This is a business proposition. They need to come, here's our 501(c), here's our business model, what we're gonna do, you know, if they're gonna copy Randolph County, that's fine, get your papers together, change the things. We're done.
Well, they, they did come, they're waiting on their 501(c), they have not...
Until they get that, we shouldn't spend a dime.
We'll wait until they get the 501(c).
Well, let me say this, let me say this, you wanna get what, I, I'd be glad to give you a job, but do you wanna take on this one? We'll send two hundred thousand dollars to Ramford and see what gets you built out there.
I don't know, I don't know. Because it's not gonna solve a problem.
Well, the thing is, is that we put the resolution on top of it, and we wrote down the number, so I'm asking you to put the resolution on top.
Ms. Cobb, Ms. Cobb is asking to put a resolution on the table, the resolution is?
Two hundred thousand in our for the shelter.
Okay, and that doesn't mean it's spent, you're just saying years more. And, and I'm, I'm asking, new business?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, new business. Okay.
I, I mean, I'd like to see some information. I mean, if we're gonna spend this kind of money, I mean, you need to know what's going on. I mean, if we don't, if we, if we back this without knowing what's going on, then we ain't doing our job, I'll just tell you.
And I, and I think, and I think you're correct, but I think one thing everybody is, well, you got most of the stuff that's being volunteered to do, and that there's probably the building that's gonna be up the site. So, me and Robbie, when we got out of truck, Robbie's gonna put together some stacks on the building and, and a site plan. But, man, Averwalker, he's got thousands of things to do, and I got thousands of things to do. But he ain't gonna, and Hill, he says, y'all, he said, he said, he'll, he'll, he'll work with us, we just do it ourselves. But I'm just telling you, with someone that knows how to build and someone that's got the equipment, that's gonna save us tons of money, he's gonna pretty much go in there and clear that off for us and do all this work. But we have to go, we, we do it, and then we gotta call him and say, who's gonna grade, who's gonna dig the water lines and sewer lines and stuff like that, which a lot of that'll be included. But most of it, we'll get out, a lot of this work will just labor, hopefully. So, if, if a bill comes in for the building, say it's, let's just use a number that is, for this section of the building, for the whole arm, for the animals, fifty thousand dollars or forty thousand or twenty thousand. Then you got the concrete, well, what, what his ideal is, is whatever's left over, once we get through building the site, we've got all these, uh, these galvanized doors that's gotta be built. We've got all the windows that's gotta be bought, we've got all the, there's gotta be one room for the cat, for the cats. I mean, this, if you go down there and you put your eyes on that, and then you go in here and loads and buy just a few little parts, I think, uh, he's talking about getting with the city of Oxford, and he says this, he says, I've done so much work down there, he said, we might get them to donate this one. That's, that's, that eliminates that having to, uh, uh, pay a hundred and sixty-nine dollars a month to have all the waste called off. This grinder's like, well, I guess it must be what the jails got or something, down at the end of the road, but it grinds it up, and then it, it's, it's, it holds up to like about a thousand gallons, and it'll pump out two hundred, three hundred gallons at one time, and that's what happened down in Randolph County, where the sewer, the city sewer guard all stopped up from that, they sees from the dog place, because it don't break down, it has to be ground up. But, uh, all the thing he's asking for is, 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 since that you have to find out the brochures, and then he says, at that point, me and him get together, then if we wanna do it here, and, but it seemed like everybody was, seemed like they were feeling better that it was on somebody else's liability, where he, where, what we was explaining, it's no liability whether it's the county or the city. But, uh, but I think, uh, and there'd be a lot of, just, I'm just saying.
Okay, y'all ready to go through the list before we vote now, or we looking at?
One more thing.
You gonna add something else to the list?
Well, I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
Uh, the little black car out here, uh, on the top of that one roof that's falling to, uh, breakup, you know, where it's, you know what that means? But I asked, uh, went by and seen, uh, which I was talking two things, but Ricky, Ricky Bridget, and, uh, uh, he said that he'd take luggage off, sand it down, hang it top, the hood, and the cow. I guess it's right there.
Between the windshield and the hood.
Huh?
That's between the windshield and the hood.
Yeah, and, uh, that's for fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, y'all take a look on the way out and just see if you wanna do it or not, it's just, I just think it would be wise to do it, because the car's still running great, and Lisa is willing to drive it once a week to make sure it's being drove and, you know, make sure everything's working, but, uh, can we get, uh, Jesse to wash it then? Or does Fred take it to the K O washing? How does that work?
I'm not sure who washes, if you like, ask him.
Listen, if it's...
We're gonna set agenda. The thing.
Okay.
Is everybody you that made the consent agenda?
We don't have any budget for that. We only have five hundred dollars on vehicle maintenance and county admin budget.
So, we have to increase that budget.
Well, a lot of times...
We might, it might be okay, we ship a lot, we ship...
By the end of the year, if there's, if there's...
Terry over there.
If Terry over there is...
He's adjusted, I have.
Yeah, adjusted, yeah, it's like...
Just want that out there, it's not me.
Consent agenda resolution.
There's only five hundred in there now.
Fifteen hundred toward...
I just, I just hate to see stuff start getting so bad that we didn't know what it's like.
The houses is squashed around.
Anybody else got a resolution, want, for, I'm gonna let her read through it, and you still can add something if you want to add. You have anything to?
Oh, I got something, but I don't have a resolution.
Okay. You want one yet?
No.
Okay, all right, let's go through it.
Okay, I will hit consent agenda first, the military rates, ABC license fees, um, the vehicle maintenance, get the engineers department to do that, except for the sheriff's department. Um, mechanics bid, motor grade, dirt roads bid, uh, surplus to the sheriff's department, SRO training, LTCF need vehicles, sheriff's department, and fifteen hundred dollars to paint it explore.
And you got the Alon Shelter, what about the policy change?
Yes, all this change is on there.
Did you mention that?
Yes.
Okay.
There's only business.
Is the Alon Shelter on there? I wasn't sure if it got added or not.
Yeah.
Is that agenda?
No, it's new business.
It's just earmarked.
Okay, I just think it's a Alon Shelter, I would do that.
I don't think it is.
And I do have no new business, I'm just hoping there's something.
But that, that, yeah, need to change.
Okay, new business, I've got, um, employee handbook change.
Okay.
I've got to mow or not to mow. The organizational chart change for the sheriff's department concerning the courthouse security and the full-time corrections officer for litter pickup, and another one for amending the budgets for those items, does that make sense? Okay.
Y'all see any separating any of those?
It'd be two, two resolutions if we can do them together, one for the organizational chart, and then one for the amending the budget part of it.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Okay, and then my last one is for earmarking the two hundred thousand for Alon Shelter, I'll do that right now.
Ms. Andrews?
Hello? Emily and I have been looking at some figures, and there's no way right now to get from a A grade from A to R. So, these are just charts, and all these on them. And, I just want to...
You know, what did you have there?
Um, you're, you're, that's fine. But anyway, uh, what we have been talking about, and I want to see how the rest of the commission feels about this, is to be able to allow the department head to do an evaluation every year, which are spoken to anyway. And then, if they, if they have a good evaluation, then they can move, say, from A to a B, which is gonna average about thirty cents. Some people it's gonna be a little more, some people it's gonna be a little less, but it's gonna average thirty cents. It's gonna cost about sixty-seven, a little, sixty-seven thousand dollars per year.
Did you ask her, is all our employees are As? Is all our employees As?
No.
So, so you're saying just on the A to the B, or from the C to the D?
No, only A.
Okay.
It gets you from A to R, we only got one employee that's topped out. Most of them are on As because of the job evaluations, pretty much everybody started at A, but we do have some that's not, there's a few. But, you move it one, you move from A to B, C to D, E to F, whatever it is, you don't allow the department heads to give more than one. You can't do more than an A to a B.
Can't just go from A to B.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't jump more than one.
So, what you're saying is, when it comes raise time, instead of that, just let the, get it handed over to the department heads as a...
Well, if you do this, and like I said, Emily, she's not here, but she done good, good work, I met her, sat down for two hours last week looking over all this stuff, but, um, if, like I said, if you get a good evaluation, you get to move up one slot, and that allows people to get, I mean, it's gonna take a lot of years, but at least you can get it from A to R. And, uh, I just want to see how everybody felt about it, was any of yous going any further? This sixty-seven thousand includes retirement, salary, and social security.
It's basically the same too as when we did the, um...
So, so are you saying, are you saying they evaluate the whole department, or just one employee?
He's first.
But what I'm saying is, it, so, let's say Lee's department.
I mean, say I evaluate Lee, okay, he's doing, he done good, I'm gonna move him from A to B. Okay, I evaluate T, I don't think he's done it good, I don't think he's done it good, I'll say he can stay at A. But, but, you know, don't, when I first got elected, there was sort of a system like this, but it was just up to the department heads, and they just give, well, I'm gonna give Laura a dollar. Well, I ain't gonna give Roger but a quarter, so there was no, no process to it.
What I'm asking is, I understand about each, but, so, you're gonna say, if, if say, all, all employees in this department is A, and he, he can go inside and evaluate them all this year, so every one of his employees, he can move them up to thirty cents?
He can move them to a B, which is roughly thirty cents, if you do all our employees averaging together, so. But, but, I'm, I wanna know what everybody thinks about it for...
And so you said that was fifty-six thousand?
Sixty-seven thousand.
For, for a year.
But this would be a year and a half, so like next year, it'd be the city and city, the, the...
Now, unless we approve it, I'd move to another level. Are you planning on doing this every year?
Well, that's what I'm asking the commission, I mean, that's, I've done a little bit of work on it now, y'all need to tell me what you're gonna rate even the budget.
When we did the pay study, the pay study was designed that you were gonna have to do special increases anyway to that.
But this is what Terry's talking about.
That's what you do.
This isn't part of the base thing.
Can I make one suggestion on this?
Well, that's what I'm asking for.
Let's wait till October, September.
Be looking at it, that's...
Well, we're looking at it now.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, with, with the upcoming budget, is this something we wanna look at?
Well, no, definitely, because there's no way, I mean, if we leave everybody where they're at, we're gonna, in five years, we're gonna be right back where we're at again.
It's competing, yeah, because they're right in space at A.
Yeah, they're, they're not...
These would be merit raises versus cost of living rates, that's right.
And the sixty-seven thousand is kind of worse than scenario, as far as what it's gonna cost, is that's figuring, everybody getting one spot, some may not.
Well, I think, I think one thing, I think, so, by doing this, uh, you know, we did this... you know, we did this and then, uh, our, you know, which we're part time. But like the sheriff and Ryan, you know, he's planning on retiring and then, uh, Joel, I don't know if she's planning on retiring, but they're, you know.
That, that's something you have to do separate, this would just be for how we leave-
But, but how, I know, I mean, after, we give away, keep giving all these raises and you never recognize, I ain't worried about us as much, but I'm worried about, we know that this don't pay the salaries at the house, but the people that, that, whoever would take Ryan's place or Ryan's still there or the sheriff, he's just starting out at the base pay. Well, he's sitting back there thinking, maybe I need to get back on the other side of things. Uh, if, uh, I'm just saying, we already think, at least thinking about our full-time elected officials, which-
I think full-time, I mean, all officials be associated with any cost of living on that omnibus, but on merit, I don't think we would be-
That's what I'm saying, I think, I think we are just thinking about that too.
And that's what I'm going out there for.
You could do this, you could do this for your officials.
Go ahead.
If you read the pay study, it said it, and that's what every, every board office is, when you, when you talk about a step, you know, putting steps, like the surrounding counties, that is like you're talking about, Terry, pretty much automatic if you're doing your job. That way, when you hire somebody, you can say, okay, if you stayed twenty years with us, you know, you've got a path to get to this level. And then, cause like the pay study said, cost of living's on top of that. Uh, and then that would affect elected officials and everything. But that's the way it used to be, we have still got the evaluation forms. Me and Chief Decky evaluated all employees, when the commission approved, uh, cost of living rates or whatever, we'd evaluate all employees, you know, to approve and to get that. And we've still got those evaluation forms, so that's-
You're not, you're not, this way you would not be going across the board with all raises, you just be the ones that, that own your job.
That's the way the county surrounding, as I look at this, Terry, it, it, this is pretty much automatic for them, the step raises. And then cost of living is completely-
If something's outside of it. So, in order, in order for like, if we get a two percent or three percent, plus these step raises would just be over here. And then for, for our elected officials and stuff, maybe we get a cost of living.
If you never do a cost of living raises, the, the step scale will never move up and then you're going into the same situation as that last year. When, you know, we're paying five dollars less than the tunnel and-
Inflation.
Starting to pay, yeah.
So, so, but a two percent in our county was like, two or three percent was like, about fifty, sixty thousand, they would.
I, I didn't do any work on that, so I can't tell you.
Yeah, we, we did a few times.
I was just looking at this and I sat down with Emily, like I said, last week, and we went over all the questions I had, so I'm just throwing it out there, is it something? We wanted to ask Emily with, with getting ready for the new budget or, or is this something? Good crap, I'm gonna throw a track.
No, I think you're gonna have to do something, or like I said, we're gonna be right back where we were.
Well, is it something we need to vote on, but I guess, then, my next question.
Did Aunt Sally pass for y'all with this decision, she don't got, I mean, what does she gotta do?
I mean, you gotta do each employee, which she's got some figures worked up, but she don't have all of them worked up. She just did a spreadsheet, she might show it to you later, she probably know more about neither. She did a spreadsheet and that's where she came up with the sixty-seven thousand dollars. And most people it's thirty cents, some people it's a little more, some people it's a little less.
And I thought, uh, I thought we had where the first step was already evaluated. Cause didn't you get a step raise, what did you get?
Mark, you get market equity after, after a little while, you get some equity. If you've been here, after you've been here one year, goes one to three. One to three years, you get that one little step and then there's another one after three years.
But that was the first step raises.
That's what I'm talking about.
It might have bumped a little bit right from the beginning, as soon as the pay scheme passed, just because I was on the, to get me to the rate where I'm supposed to be, which is now you can show that, that plate pass.
But what I'm saying, it had a one-year walk, so, so-
You know, you get a little bump from being here.
Because, like, so that's what I'm saying, it's not the, the A to B already been, already-
It's not like that, well, the A to B is-
Not for every employee, that's just-
It's a separate item.
This, this is for our employees.
So, so how long does these things last? Just two year, just the one year and the three year?
Well, you get, you get a bump when you've been here for one to three years, it's just that one little bump. And then you get one bump more if you've been here-
Well, you get a bump for one year. You've been here three years.
You get it for one, for one time.
That's what I'm saying.
Whether you've been for one year or three years, it just, when it started, if you had been here for two years, you got a little bump up. Or if you've been here for three years, you get, you got one little bump up, that's it. But if you're, if you're, you were here like me, I just came in before it started, I just get that one time, one year, and I won't get another one till year four.
Okay, that's one, that's one time.
Not just here.
What was that thing we got, so, so, so those are the only two, those are the only two that you get, is that one year or two years, which is it?
One year and, and, and third year.
Third year, you'll get another bump.
Okay, so I'm just saying, there's other bumps already that we're talking about, and now we're talking about steps and then we're talking about, I think we, I think that's like, we need to make sure that we know this time that we don't wind up at two fifty and it'd be freaky.
Yeah.
So, maybe she just missed a little bit.
Now, one thing she could do and just, just for informational purposes, and it wouldn't be that,
Is it one year?
It would not be hard, I'll be going to help her. Is you could look at, say, what a, what a two percent cost of living raise would be for all employees and then this on top of it, just to see. Because you're right, if you leave the scale the same, even if you're bumping people up on the scale, you're still, you've still got a problem. Your scale is staying down here and every year, and other places the scale's going up or inflation is causing that.
That's two different things.
It is two different things, that it's some numbers that you could put together, but that's, unless you wanna pass a resolution to task Emily to do that or whatever, I don't, if there's anything else to be done about it, except for discussion at this point.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would-
Yeah, I'd, I'd look at it, put together a package, if you don't put no consent agenda, I think, um, you know, it costs no money. Yeah.
You task Emily to that, to do that work, which you did. That's what I'm saying, so I'm gonna resolution, okay?
Um, also, I talked with, um, Senator Price and I talked with some, you know, with our new, um, law that we just, our central unit government that we passed. I talked to him about us putting in some, um, regulation on sewage, raw sewage, about, you know, eliminating if anyone builds, any building, little building, that they have to have sewage. And some way or another, it needs to come through the county, the health department. Would like for it to ever to come through Alabama power. I would like to be able for us to task Jason to get with A C C and start looking at that and looking at putting the regulations together, which will have to be brought back to us, we'll have to look at it. But this is start on the, um, sewage.
Okay, so you wanna pass the county attorney, that'd be your resolution?
Yes, sir.
I think I should ask Jason to set all the stuff before we start getting into specifics.
But that's what, I mean, he's gonna have to set up, you gotta, you can't go in there and, I mean, you've got different regulations in the central unit government, but you gotta start with that raw sewage first.
You gotta, well, I understand, and I may be wrong, but what I understand, you gotta set the whole process up before you start picking out what you wanna do. We haven't, we ain't done anything on it. It needs to be set up, Jason can set it up and then you can say, okay, we wanna do this.
But it's not just you do that.
But, but we gotta task him to do it, we gotta task him to do anything.
That's what I'm saying, you can task him to set it up to be able to do that.
To do that, that's what I'm gonna do, get him to start the process.
And now, I wanna say something about that, if you don't have Alabama power on board with this, it's just-
Well, I'm, I'm just going by what Senator Price told me and which will be meaningful to him, he feels like he's got a strong relationship with Alabama power. I mean, all we can do is try, if they're not on board with it, they're not, but, but we can't just-
But, but once he sets it up, Terry, uh, when we set this up, like the solar high places along, just along the road where it really, it's a fifty-fifty shot that it is a jump yard. Uh, at that point, then we can, uh-
You could do anything if it falls under than five, uh, you know, it's, whatever the five dimes are. But, you gotta set up a structure before you can get into that. And we hadn't even set up the structure, so we sort of need to task him to set that up first.
I like you brought that up to us at one time too.
We gotta task him, we haven't done that yet.
I mean, he and I has talked about it and you, you gotta do that first before you can start picking stuff out.
Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am, y'all want to go down?
I suggest to task him to move forward.
New business, consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Everybody give that? All right. Anything else? By the way, our, our, um, the twentieth falls on President's Day, which is a holiday, so, everybody give, we just, I think, uh, the way it's set up, we can do it anytime that week, but I hope Tuesday at five or four thirty. Is that good for everybody?
Yes.
On the twenty-first, I give you this dream?
I don't know.
I will be here.
I'm gonna be out of town.
Why not get back in time to do this?
I don't know if I'll be back.
I might be back in town, cause I-
What, is there another day that week y'all wanna do?
I mean, look at my calendar.
I can do any time the third is that week.
Sounds like it's gonna be third.
I'll hand it in the third, this is my record.
So, I, I think, man, I'm a fine man.
Is, is that not the same day that Chad and Randy also?
He's coming down, talking to y'all on the twentieth.
But that's, yeah, that's President's Day, right?
Yeah, okay.
So, uh-
You have everybody off, you know.
Sure, you, you, we can do it on Wednesday, can we?
I mean, you can.
Let's do it Wednesday, y'all have Bible study?
I mean, everybody, we have Bible study, but we can, I mean, I miss Bible study, I'm studied up.
Wednesday we're good, I'll be-
I'm all prayed up, I'm just kidding.
So, we can sign up for twenty-second then?
Is that what y'all do, the twenty-second, that give everybody a chance to be here?
Yeah.
Can we move, can we put that on?
Cause I'll leave. Get, I'll be back on this one.
All right, so can y'all put that on the website?
Yeah.
Thank you.
First, first meeting on Wednesday, what we making changes in this county?
I got one more. Yes, sir. Is there any way we can get a report, and I didn't even talk to Lisa about this, I'm sure she did. Only key, any light things we could? Can we get that?
Yeah, we should, yeah, we can.
Okay.
Sure, we don't have any light. No, that's a bad basis.
But, uh, nineteen hundred was taking care of it. Nineteen hundred was taking, that, 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 that-
I just had a couple of babies to call me and say they're not getting paid enough, I don't know. This is theirs or, and they said it's not, so I don't know.
If you, if you can come with specific names, I can add for a date or, I can say there's a problem. I know sometimes when they got timing issues, depending on, you know, when somebody wrote something in, if we need that. Which are AP in time, just to only have a class in line.
If, if we ever do pay a late fee, just bring it to us, how about that? And then, that way, don't, she's gotta do it every month or whatever, but just, if we do have to pay one, make us a word.
Y'all ready to go home?
Yes, I am.